Okay, it is eight thirty. We will bring the meeting to order. We have an agenda before us. There are two additions to the agenda. Eight point one will be request for decision, Neeho Minor Hockey. And eight point two is the committee of the whole meeting cancellation. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing as done, I would entertain a motion to accept as amended. Counselor King.
That would be my motion to accept the agenda as amended.
We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor. That is carried unanimously. We pre-circulated the meeting minutes of February the twelfth. Are there any corrections or thoughts on those minutes?
Thank you. I move to adopt the minutes as presented.
Motion's been made to adopt the minutes as presented. All those in favor. Let's carry unanimously. We will now go on to five point one, transportation. New gravel stockpile lease location. Welcome Brad. And anytime you're ready.
Morning, Mr. Aven. Members of council. You have to hold. There we go. Okay. So morning, we're bringing you a, an RFD for information. We're looking for a new stockpile site in the north for gravel. We lost the one that we had in the past. So a little background on this. We're unable to renew a previous gravel stockpile location in the north portion of the county. And now we're pursuing a new secure gravel stockpile at Northwest twenty-nine thirty-three, twenty-three along twenty-one. We're proposing roughly about a five acre lease for a term of five years, which is the standard term what we usually do. The location is vital to ensuring a ready supply of gravels available to re-gravel the county road infrastructure in a timely manner. Stockpiles that are located adjacent to primary highways are ideal. We're not dealing with dust or dealing with dust control for those residents that may be affected due to that stockpile. The current use of this land is pasture. There's not much for topsoil on it. It's a nice clay base. So there wouldn't be much for stripping of this. Costs of this will be operating budget. Terms of the proposed lease are in alignment with two other current leases. We do have a stockpile policy. We follow that with this. So just to maybe just go to the area. So what we wanted to show was where we have stockpile sites currently and where we don't. So all those little stars are, the black ones are areas that we have current stockpiles. And the yellow, the yellow one to the north there in the middle is the proposed, the new one. So you can see that northeast corner doesn't have much for stockpile. It takes a lot of trucking hours to get that gravel from one source to the road. If you want to just go one more. That would be the proposed area. So right across from the, anyone knows the Luthen Cemetery along Highway twenty-one. There is a severed piece with a tributary going through there. There is a nice wide approach, good sightlines. Again, it's pasture, it's not crop. The current landowner is willing to lease that to the county for this purpose. We've talked to the two adjacent landowners that, residents I should say, that live close. If they would have an issue, both have no issue with the stockpile being there. So this is something we'd look at stripping next year and then stockpiling for the fall or summer for the next following year. So. Any questions?
Okay, we have a recommendation. Fay. Counselor McGee.
I move that we receive this as information. Thanks Brad, that was well presented.
Thank you.
Here we have a motion on the floor. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing as none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. And that is carried unanimously. Thanks Brad.
Thank you.
You're not going to file gravel today, are you? No, I didn't think so. Okay, our next agenda item is five point three point one. And welcome Barb.
Welcome.
And anytime you're ready.
Okay, we have a proposed request to redesignate a portion of land on the southwest of thirteen, thirty-four, twenty-four, west of the fourth. From the agricultural district to the industrial district. Al Winter Farms Limited has given permission to Secure Energy as a leaseholder to apply to redesignate a portion of the subject lands from agriculture district to industrial district. Secure Energy Services is proposing to construct and operate an injection disposal facility and a waste management facility for oil field waste. This site is subject to approvals from Alberta Energy Regulator as well as ourselves. Secure Energy provides waste disposal solutions throughout conventional and unconventional oil and gas exploration. As a third-party service supplier to the oil industry, they are subject to the redesignation and development permit process under Neeho County, but are still bound by the regulations and permitting process of the AER because it's oil field waste. The permitted and discretionary uses of the industrial district are noted below. There is a table that is attached. But they would fall under waste management facility major, which is a discretionary use. And we've included the definition there for your information. If successful in their redesignation, a development permit for discretionary use would be required. The municipal planning commission would determine whether or not their application is approved. We're coming here today just to get them into the queue and to get the public hearing set. The redesignation fee has been paid by the applicant. This is a directive and a consultative decision, so it will go to public hearing. So our recommended action is that council move first reading a proposed bylaw seventeen eighty-six. And that council move to schedule the public hearing for March twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen at ten AM for the purposes of amending land use bylaw seventeen seventy-three for redesignation of a portion of the southwest of thirteen, thirty-four, twenty-four, west of four from the agricultural district to the industrial district.
Thanks Barb. Everybody understands what's going on. We got to get this, to get this in the queue to get it started, we have to do first reading to it. Does anyone prepare to move first reading to bylaw seventeen eighty-six? Counselor Keever.
I shall move first reading of bylaw seventeen eighty-six.
And anytime you're ready Deb.
Thank you. Occupational Health and Safety External Audit I'm presenting to you today. As part of the regular reporting to council, the organization's external audit results are being presented to you today. AMSA awards a certificate of recognition for employers that have demonstrated good health. Every three years, we have a external audit that's conducted on the municipality. Annually, we do an internal audit. In 2018, we received a core audit score of 92 percent, and that's a good indicator of the program compliance. The injury stats are good as well, and the decrease in incidents from 2017 is an indicator of concerns that were addressed. Maintaining our core is part of our accountability to council, to our employees, and to the public. Financially, our core specifically allows for a discount of $5,000 approximately annually in our workers' compensation premiums. And our good experience standing for our safety program includes partnership and injury reduction. Also provides a savings of approximately $15,000 in those premiums as well. These dollars form the budget and help offset the costs of health and safety program, which we focus continued training and supplies such as PPE protection equipment. The incidence comparison is there for your review? As well as the last three years of scores? And the recommendation is that council accepts the occupational health and safety audit and report as information.
Thanks Deb. Does council have any questions for our OHS audit? Counselor Keever.
Just out of curiosity, is there any one area that has more shows, like?
Departments?
Where, where are the injuries coming from?
I don't have the department injuries in front of me specifically, but of course, the ones that have higher risk are the ones that have a little bit more, I guess, incidents and.
Are they just coming from all over the whole?
Absolutely, the entire organization, so administration isn't going to have as many incidents as operations.
Mr. Reeve, just to supplement, you'll notice that the greatest number of incidents are those that acquire, that involve vehicles and equipment. That's quite standard in our business. You'll also see that in all cases, 2018 is better than 2017, and I think that's the, the most important indication to see, both in terms of incidents, near misses, but most important injuries. I mean, we've gone from 13 three years ago to six last year. That's, that's significant. Significant effort and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Tonowski. Is there any other questions for Deb? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept as information. Counselor McGee.
I so moved to receive this report as information. Thank you Debbie.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's done, call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Okay, we will move on to Corporate Services, six point one. Mr. Mike, welcome. Nice drive from the north this morning?
Cold. Just like everywhere. Every bump was elevated quite significantly. Well, again, good morning, Mr. Reeve and members of council this morning. Item six point one is the 2018 Project and Capital Budget Report. The council passed its 2018 capital budget in December of 2017, and then your role, of course, is in governance is to ensure that there is stewardship over its entrusted resources and not those you give through to management. Presentation of the 2018 Project and Capital Budget Variance Report is based on the data available as of February 8, 2019, so that was the reporting date and cutoff. Indicated in the report to show status, if you will, is the green indicating complete projects and the orangey color to indicate the projects that will be carried forward to 2019, so there shouldn't be no surprise. Kind of, it ties in with year end. Comments are also provided as well for your information as a status updates as per the department manager, so. But I'm not going to go through every individual item, and that's not, that's pretty typical. But the summary as attached, we'll go through just at a high level. Starting with on page 28, there's the gravel acquisition projects, which total amount within that category of 2.638 million dollars. And I'm just going to use some rounding. It consists of 2018 purchases of 2.075 million, so that was the allocation. That was this amount spend on that allocation budget line item. So, that was for the 18 program, and then there was the 17 program. Carryforward funds of about 395,000 that was expended as well. And lastly, there was an actual transfer to reserve, the gravel reserve, the cash, if you will, of about 167,000 dollars, and that was as per budget. The next item was on page 29. That's on the non-tangible capital asset projects, and it consisted of a total expenditure line item of approximately 1.4 million dollars. 1.1 million dollars of which comes directly right from the shoulder pull program. As indicated, that's, that is, we deem that as a non-tangible capital asset project based on the criteria laid out in that policy. Tourism master plan is 96,000 dollars. And, and the Wimbourn Reclamation Project, essentially just getting started and that for sure will be carried forward into the next year. Approximately 100,000 dollars spent to date. Moving along to the, on page 30, the tangible capital asset projects, which are the most significant type of expenditure projects in, in the county. And that's pretty typical. To date, spent approximately 5.2 million dollars as of the reporting date. Consisting of largely a number of projects, but first was the budgeted transfer to, to reserves of about 1.5 million dollars. So, council, as per the 2018 budget, approved these transfers, 381,000 to building reserve, 392,000 to Hamlet Reserve, and 750,000 to Parks Reserve. So, that's a, that's an accounting entry essentially, and allocates money for future projects. Range Road 25-1 is the road rebuild. 2.2 million dollars was spent to date as of the reporting date. The Range Road 24-4 and 24-5, 116,000, so that's relatively in its infancy and will be carried forward. The Linden West Road, 534,000 dollars was spent. The Huxley Micro Surface, approximately 268,000 spent. Horseshoe Canyon Development, 126,000. Bridge Projects, 194,000. And the Churchill Rehabilitation Water Project, 78,000 dollars was spent to date, and of course, that will be carried forward into 2019. Page 32 is the capital equipment. And then we have two different levels. The new to the plan, remember, is new to the plan, so that's tax-funded operating dollars, if you will. So, it gets added into the cap, capital equipment plan after, or essentially at the beginning, but it's funded through a different source that, because it's new, there's not dollars available. So, at, in the, in the reserve, so that's why we fund it on operating level. It's 95,000 dollars, and that was complete. Capital equipment existing plan, that's part of the, the capital equipment plan that we have. Total amount of 1.38 million was spent. One vehicle was not quite in use as of the reporting date, and one vehicle is not replaced or being carried forward. There was just no use for, for that to be, to be expended, so we were able to, to maintain our stock going forward. Water Service Area and Capital Equipment Plan contributions you'll see on page both 28 and 34. Total of 3.3 million dollars spent. Complete, 1.9 to the capital equipment plan reserve, and 1.4 to Water Service Area Reserve through the annual local improvement tax as well as the special tax. And lastly, the capital sales, those are the items that were either traded in or, or went to auction or through various sales. 468,000, which goes back into the capital equipment plan. So, the total summary to date on that page, total expenditures and transfers, approximately 14 million dollars on a total budget expenditure transfer of 26.7 million dollars. And that, council, is the reporting for capital for 2018. If there was any expenses after the February 8 date reporting period, it will be in the last year-end cutoff, but this is a pretty, this is what, what essentially, I would say 90 percent roughly, give or take, is going to be what it's going to look like for 2018 reporting, so. Other than those invoices that may have come late, that's what, 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 it's a pretty good indication what it's going to look like, the final numbers, so. And with that, I will leave it with you for any questions or discussion that I can answer or a motion?
Well, thank you, Mr. Morton. Very thorough, as usual.
Thank you.
Does council have any questions for Mike? Must have done a great job. No questions. Be looking for a motion to receive for information? Counselor Christie.
I move to accept as information.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Let these blinds come down. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing's done, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And I guess while you're in the chair there, Mr. Morton, we can do six point two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Item six point two is Financial Policy 1620. It's a utility billing, and there's an amendment to the policy required. And that's largely due to the changes in rates and charges for certain items approved by council earlier this year. Minor amendments are required to bring the policies in agreement with these changes and er additions, in particular with the, with respect to the waste disposal as well as the master rates bylaws that were implemented. So, this is just to, to so bring it, bring this into alignment with those particular policies. Council approved to add a garbage fee for those receiving garbage pickup, which would be added to the bi-monthly utility billing. So, therefore, the policy requires the confirmation of the utility billing 1620 with an addition and garbage pickup charges where applicable. So, we've already laid the conditions as to what that would look like in the last meeting. In addition to minor change to better reflect the actual collection, so it wasn't, it was too, a little bit too restrictive as far as how the collection on overdue counts, which are indicated on page 38 in the red attached. Just gives a better realistic presentation to be able to work internally with, with, on, with respect to doing the posting on the last notification. So, the recommended action is unless there's any questions, of course, to accept the changes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. What's council's wishes? Counselor McGee.
I move to approve the recommended act, the recommended actions for the policy.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing's done, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. We're just moving right along here. What do you think? You need a break there, Mike?
If you guys do.
No, you're, you're doing pretty good there. Let's go on to six point three.
You bet. Thanks, Mr. Reeve. Item six point three is the transfer of unsold properties from the 2018 public auction. So, the public auction was held for tax sale on Thursday, October 11, 2018 at 2:00 p.m. There were two properties at that time that were vacant acreages. There was no public in attendance and no sales made. The tax sale properties, Policy 1616, requires any lands not sold at public auction brought back to council for a motion or, or direction to, for what to do with those properties, in particular with municipal use or whether to market them for sale. So, so now we're looking at those two particular properties and what we can potentially do with them. The parcels that fall under the tax recovery section of the MGA, Section 424, states the municipality at whose requested tax recovery notification was endorsed on the certificate of title for a parcel of land may become the owner of the parcel after the public auction if the parcel is not sold at the public auction. So, we looked at both properties and under the tax provision, tax recovery provisions, and if the properties are to be retained in their owner's name, the annual levies and monthly penalties continue to be assessed against the parcel. Under tax forfeiture title, the assessment code is changed to exempt and is no longer taxable. So, if the parcel sells in the future, the county would manually calculate the taxes and penalties from the date of exemption for collection prior to forwarding any leftover funds to trust. So, that's sort of the administrative detail with respect to what happens with these properties from a tax forfeiture point of view. The funds are left in, held in the maximum of 10 years in order for the previous owner to collect. So, when we looked at the two properties, we kind of, internally, we, we looked at one in particular, the one that, south of Torrenton. And we said that if we take that particular property over, there might be a better chance that we could resell that in the future. We could maybe market it. So, we thought maybe that might be an opportunity to take clear title to that particular property and maybe do something with it. And once we have that control, if you will, we could probably look at, you know, how to better sell it as opposed to just leaving it untouched in, in the status it was. The second property, the south, we, southeast of 31, 32, 23, we, we looked at that particular property. And at this time, I think a little bit more evaluation. Administration looked at that property, and it was just a property that we feel that needs a little bit more investigation at this time. And so, we're just, we're just leaving that on the table for council that we're maybe not ready to look at that one. But the, certainly the first property, we would be willing to kind of look at taking that particular property over. But, I mean, ultimately, that's with, with council's direction on, on both of those properties.
Thanks, Mr. Morton. Are there any questions for Mike? Comments, concerns?
I, I can't imagine a derelict trailer someplace besides out my direction.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor King.
So, that second property, we are not planning to do anything at this point in time. I know it was an Anhydrous Salmonias site for some time. So, there's potential environmental risk there, for sure.
Through the chair. Counsel, Counselor King, that, that's correct. That is the, that is the concern. I would suggest that we would probably, before we take clear title to that name, we want to know what all the potential risks are with it. Yeah, that would, that, that's, that's aligned with the recommendation, yeah.
Is there access to that property, like legal access, Mike?
Yeah, by trade. That I would have to check on. I believe that if it wasn't indicated in, in the staff report, that we would have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
Mr. Reeve, I believe.
Yeah, it was just, just a question. So, that property would have a siding if somebody came up with a business that needed rail access or not?
rail access or not?
It indicates there is an easement for access.
So what are counsel's wishes? Counselor King?
I'd make the motion that we follow the recommended action, which is outlined at the bottom of the request for decision. So counsel directs administration to transfer the tax forfeiture property, Plan 8010154 Block 2 to Neill County, and direct administration to undertake further exploration regarding the Plan 9710935 Block A prior to any further decision on that one.
Okay, thank you, Counselor King. We have a motion on the floor to approve the recommended action as outlined in the bottom. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously.
Thanks, counsel.
Well, thank you, Mr. Morton. I think you're to the end of your presentations, yes? Maybe we will call a 15-minute recess. Thanks.
Okay, we'll bring the meeting back to order. And we will move on to seven point one. Deb, welcome. And anytime you're ready.
Thank you, Reeve. I bring to you today the Neheel County Fire Engine Replacement RFD. At the February 12, 2019, regular meeting council deferred the decision on the RFD until February 26 following the strategic planning session. On November 18, Troshu Fire responded to a motor vehicle incident on Highway 21 and Range Road 241 with the 2007 fire engine owned by Neheel County. The roads were icy due to freezing rain that morning and the apparatus was rolled. A rental fire engine has been in place in the Troshu Hall meeting to meet the service level standards. The insurance that we have on that truck will cover up to $75,000 for a rental, which is approximately two years. Rental fire engine in Torrington, just kind of to clarify the question that was asked last meeting, the Torrington Hall, we do have a rental in that hall and it costs about $3,000 plus GSE right now per month. And that's due to a pump failure that happened in Torrington, so we are paying for that. That Torrington rental will cost us in the end, by the time we actually get a truck in there, it's going to cost us about $70,000 to $80,000 in rental costs. And then just kind of as an FYI, Carbon is the other rental that, or the other truck that we, is at 20 years this year. And that's the other one that we have in the budget to replace. There is a very good possibility that it also won't pass pump tests and we might need a rental in there as well. So that's $3,000 a month, just kind of as an FYI. So option for the, for the replacement engine. Option one is to purchase a replacement engine. Deposit only needed in 2019. Capital funding reserve would be used in 2020 to cover the remaining costs. The insured cost of the apparatus is $290,000. The engine has been fully funded in the capital replacement, sorry, not fully funded, but funded to the amount of $253,000 in the capital replacement reserve. Benefits, replacement fire apparatus in the hall, new engine in our fleet, which again, three engines, the same would, would be a positive impact to our fire services, I believe. Apparatus can be built to meet the needs of Neheel County. Purchasing a third truck the same year as the other two engine replacements that have already been approved gives us purchasing advantage of approximately $50 until we give the specs to the companies. That's when we'll know for sure when that, how much that amount is. This would allow for three engines in our fleet to be similar and that would be for ease of operations between the fire department's coverage and being able to move, move the equipment around easily if, if that was so needed. Making this purchase now will still allow the new fire chief to review our fleet and provide further input for next year's truck replacements. The Acme engine is a 2000 and Torrington tanker is also 2000, which means that they are 20 years old and within three months I can have the fire chief sitting here giving options for those trucks and getting those ordered as well if council deems that as a priority. Disadvantages, top-up funding access through the annually funded capital equipment plan reserve of $234,000. One year to 18 months build time now is what the trucks are. Option two is to use the $290,000 from insurance and purchase a used apparatus that will last approximately 10 years. The benefits, permanent replacement apparatus can be in place sooner than a new build and the disadvantages is that the used fire apparatus will have little value come 2027. Availability of used apparatus is variable and alterations may need to, may need to be done on that truck to ensure Neheel County's needs are met. Option three is to change the level of service for Division VII and not replace that engine. Insurance funding of $230,000, which means that it would be $60,000 less. Benefits, Neheel County would be able to fund apparatus at a future date. And disadvantages, Neheel County residents in Division VII would have a decreased level of fire services. Response from Three Hills would result in longer response times and a new agreement with Three Hills for response areas. Insurance ratings for many county residents will increase and possibly in some cases double, depends on the equipment in that hall. The decision would cost approximately $60,000 in lost funding. The decision would not give us purchasing savings and the action would not comply with current section of the fire services agreement with the town of Troshu. Cost of, costs and funding, $290,000 to come from insurance and $234,000 is in the capital reserve for that truck specifically. Engagement, this is a directive decision by council. I have, I have done my research. I don't claim to be an expert firefighter. I was only on volunteer for eight years. But I have done my research. I have consulted with Stettler County, Red Deer County, Pinoka County, Mountain View County, Wheatland County, Starland County, Cypress County, and MD of foothills. And they all have similar equipment with multifunctional equipment, not specific equipment for one specific type of fire. I have also met with multiple salesmen at Rocky Mountain Phoenix and made some phone calls to other places such as Hub and talked about different trucks. The options are endless and a lot of the trucks are multifunctional, multipurpose for that reason because they are used for multiple different types of fires. So the recommended action is that council approves option one. Proceed with using their insurance funds to purchase a replacement engine for the 2007 Freightliner Engine 61 in 2019 and the remaining funds to come from the capital equipment reserve in the 2020 budget.
So are there any questions for Ms. Grossfield from council? Councilor King?
I guess I have a number of different questions, so one of the things you said that the used fire apparatus would have little value at the end of its life. Currently, the trucks that we have in our system, when they're 20 years old, do they have much value? Okay, so even if we bought a used unit at the end of that life, it's basically zero value to us, just like the existing ones?
Yeah, I believe that we sold that truck to Rocky Mountain Phoenix in a trade for about $15,000, I believe.
Okay. Do you know the age of the truck that we're renting in Troshu?
I do not.
Okay, is it meeting the needs of the?
It is, yeah. Yes, it is right now, I believe. It's an engine, it has the capacity, the tank capacity to meet that pumping and pumping requirements.
Okay, and the thing it's missing is the pump and roll?
I don't believe it has pump and roll.
Okay. And then I guess my next and possibly my last question, unless you spur some more thought on my part, is if we're ordering these trucks or paying their deposits, who's setting the specs on these engines? Like who ultimately sets the specs on what these engines will be?
Through the chair, I have, the fire departments have all went out and spec trucks and they all have done it on their own accord. I have also talked to each single chief and said, "You can do all you want, however, it's Neheel County who makes that ultimate decision." The salesmen that they've talked to, they all know that it's Neheel County that makes that decision. Last week I had a meeting with the fire commissioner's office for over three hours talking about fire. They are more than willing to come and help us with specking out those trucks. Like I said, there's been, I've been, I've done multiple consultations with so many fire, real fire chiefs in the area on what we need. And so I feel like I've done the research and I've, and I have, I've consulted with many. Like I said, the fire chiefs also have an opinion, which is, which is fantastic, but ultimately it's Neheel County who's making that decision on those trucks.
Through the chair?
Yes.
So what you're saying is that the three fire departments that are going to be affected here, they have done, they've developed their wish list?
They have their opinion, for sure.
Okay, and then, but that you've made it clear to them that ultimately we will be specking these trucks?
Absolutely.
Okay, just supplemental to that, in the past, I know the fire departments, once the trucks have landed, have made significant alterations to some of these trucks. Would that be in consideration at this point as well?
Through the chair, the, the only, the Linden truck that came in in 2007, I believe that was a, they came to Neheel County Council for all of those amendments and Neheel County Council is the one that approved the additional amendments to that truck.
Thank you. Councilor Keever?
Where does the response time from Three Hills come into this picture like you're saying here? What has changed in Troshu that now Three Hills have to respond?
If, if you went with a different option and not replace the engine, then they would be responding, say, from here to Huxley. And so of course that would just increase that response time.
Are there any other questions from council? Councilor Christie?
Because at scrap planning, we decided we had a very, very good fire service and we should stay out of the weeds, I would make the motion to approve option one.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion to that motion? Counselor McGee?
I agree with the emotion. I would like to see though that we have our own, sorry, emblem on the fire truck as opposed to the fire departments so that we can move them around and keep them more clearly available to all of us.
So you'd be looking, well, okay, we're, that'll be part of the director's decisions, I guess. Mr. Turnowski, do you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Reeve, I was going to the same place where you went, that, that I think if that's a, an expectation of council, and that could be a second motion if you choose, then that could certainly be something that would be part of the conversation with, with the urban centers that, that we partner with. And it really is a county resource that is allocated to one station and in the fullness of time, there could be reallocations based on other, other pieces of equipment coming into the system or otherwise. Not to be misunderstood that a piece of equipment would be taken out and not replaced, but it is a resource that Neheel County, like any resource that we have, would be put to the highest and best use.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for you, Deb. Any idea what the cost of the engine that is being rented in Troshu? Is that available for sale? And what's, do you know what the year is on it or the cost to purchase that piece of equipment? Any ideas?
Sorry, I don't. The insurance company, I, I could probably get that information for you from the insurance company, but the insurance company deals directly with and puts that in there, so I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
Mr. Reeve, I'd be surprised if it was for sale because it's used in this sort of application as a plug while people are waiting for.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. Grossfield? Seeing's none. We have a motion on the floor. Motion is to approve option number one. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Can I make a second motion then to?
Yes.
Request administration to look into the deckel being, reflecting that it is a Neheel County piece of equipment so that it can be utilized where deemed necessary in future years.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion to that motion? Counsel, or sorry, Mr. Turnowski?
Ever since I moved over here, it's gotten a little more confusing.
Yeah.
Want to inquire whether the counselor would see a joint deckling of sorts acceptable?
Councilor Christie?
I believe all the trucks have a Neheel County deckle on them now, don't they?
Welcome back, Deb.
Sorry, can I just?
Yes, you may.
So what I'm doing for the Torrington truck right now, because Torrington is their own fire department, but yet they still have their own little fire department gopher mascot logo, so I'm making, I've made a large Neheel County Fire Services logo that will go on the side of the truck and then their, or Torrington one will go, a small one towards the back. So that's kind of how I'm trying to redeckle the trucks, so.
Okay, so I'd like to amend my motion to ensure that there is a, a primary deckle. Thank you for helping me find my word. An only secondary, second deckles to indicate departments.
And we'll wait for that motion to be printed up on screen. Is that the way you would like to see the motion read, Counselor McGee?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's done. I will call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, thank you. We will now move on to new business, eight point one, Neheel Minor Hockey. Mr. Turnowski?
Mr. Reeve, we received a request very late, that's why this is added to the agenda today, from the Neheel Minor Hockey Association that's requesting that the county Reeve or another appropriate representative attend their opening ceremonies on March 15th at the Troshu Arena as well as a donation. Our typical donation to this group has been $400. I know from policy administratively, we can approve 250 and that is an option, however, we thought we would bring this to council. And on the third sheet, I guess it would be the fifth page of the, of the handout, it shows the various alternatives. $100 business card ad, a $200 quarter page ad, half page ad for 300, full page ad for 400, and et cetera. And from what I understand, we've, we've typically done the, the full page ad welcoming and acknowledging the Neheel Minor Hockey Association's work. And there are two parts to the motion. One approving the sponsorship and one approving the attendance of, of the Reeve or other designate to participate in the opening ceremonies.
Thank you, Mr. Turnowski. What are council's wishes? Counselor King?
I'd make the motion that council approves sponsoring the full page ad and that a council representative from Neheel Council be present at the opening ceremonies.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion to that motion?
Mr. Reeve, it may be helpful for council to determine who will represent council.
Oh, sorry. I didn't read the total motion that's there, but so just specify Reeve or designate to attend the opening ceremonies at the Troshu Arena.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, we would understand that you would attend and in your absence, that would fall to another member of council, the deputy or the area counselor or whatever.
Very good. Okay, we'll wait for that motion to be displayed on screen. Counselor King, is that the way you would like that motion to read?
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, that's good. Do you want a date, or we don't need to mention the date. We know the date's March fifteenth and the ceremonies are at Troschu, so.
All right, is there any discussion to that motion at this time? Seeing's none. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. And we will move on to eight point two, committee of the whole meeting cancellation. Mr. Turnowski?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So at the organizational meeting, council laid out its meeting schedule, and that included setting aside Tuesday, March fifth as a committee of the whole meeting date. Our hope was that we would be able to have the Horseshoe Canyon master plan come back on that date. The, the consultants are unavailable. We also recognize that we find ourselves a little bit behind the eight ball in terms of delivering a meaningful agenda for that date, given, given senior staff's participation last week in strategic planning and et cetera. So our thought was, let's use that time to, to catch up and, you know, deliver some strong agendas for March twelfth and twenty-sixth and recommend to council cancellation of the March fifth committee of the whole. It'll also give you a breather from a very busy week last week.
Thank you, Mr. Turnowski. What's council's wishes? Counselor Penner?
I'll make the motion that committee of the whole meeting schedule for Tuesday, March fifth be canceled.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none. I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. We still have fifteen minutes before the delegation. So let's move to number ten, council and committee reports. Counselor King?
Mr. Reeve, my motion would be we receive the council and committee reports for information.
Thank you. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none. I'll call the question. All those in favor? It's carried unanimously. We will move on to number eleven, counselor, or council follow-up action list.
Mr. Reeve, I think the report is self-explanatory. We've been able to mark the vast majority of them as complete. Happy to answer any questions?
I have a question, then. Are we coming along with the Churchill Water System? Have we? Are we moving along with it?
So we discussed this yesterday in our directors and managers meeting where we're laying out the timeframes for, for tendering of the lines and of the reservoir, recognizing that there's some communication that needs to happen prior to that, including providing an update presentation to council. Ms. Watt, do you recall when this is intending to come to council?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I believe it's around the end of March, so probably the second meeting in March. We should be able to confirm all of the timeframes and everything that we need going forward. But the land purchase is confirmed, so those were some of the final details that they needed to complete their final engineering on the project.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other discussion on council action items? Counselor McGee?
I'm open to receive the action items as information.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to receive for information. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. We are nine forty-seven. We have a delegation at ten. I would like to call a recess and reconvene at ten. Number three, delegations. Mr. Neme, you asked to be a delegation to come before council. I would like to just remind you that these proceedings are livestreamed and are on YouTube for posterity, so they are being recorded. We'll introduce ourselves and then, starting from my far right.
Morning, Kevin Kenking, Division seven.
Jim Hugo, Division five.
Wade Christie, Division six.
Jerry Whitstock.
Fay McGee, Division one.
Debbie Fenn, Division two.
Peter Turnowski, C E O.
Welcome. I guess everyone knows your name is Mr. Neme.
And proceed. Sure. So as you well know, obviously, by now, because of the letter in the paper, but aside from that, I've come to this meeting about the super lagoon that's being built on the southeast of twenty-nine, thirty-two, twenty-three, which is on county land. I've pursued and requested information through the formal routes, but this has been most futile and yet revealing about how covert things have been, as the way I see it. As a result, I want to know everything that there is to know about this industrial development because there's some because there's some, seems to be a big cover up, miscarriage of justice and a process within this governing body of Neheel County that attempts to support the phrase "the end justifies the means." Having found out only by chance about a month ago about the ugly industrial development on the east half of Southeast 29, which is again owned by you, the county. I've been trying to discover all I can about it, but the county has made it very difficult. Given the failures of communication from Neheel County and the obvious present and future industrial activity around the construction site, I have repeatedly called for a stop work order, but that goes unanswered clearly. Having been given no notifications or warnings about this frac water lake that's being built, even though I'm an adjacent landowner to the north and my son's land is to the west of this 80 acre parcel, I feel there's been an amazing secrecy and lack of concern from councillors and Neheel County. I created an initial series of questions and concerns that I addressed to all councillors and your CAO. That was through emails as you've all received. As I've already stated in my letter to all of you, I found that the answers to my questions from Peter, your CAO, were defensively vague, incomplete, and evasive. Therefore, that is why I'm here, because that didn't work. You councillors passed and signed it into being and you are responsible, so that's my only avenue. First in general, why wasn't, number one, why wasn't I notified of this industrial development? That being a frac water pond of huge dimensions and capacities, 180,000 cubic meters to be exact is what I understand. And that in terms for the average layperson is about, if the Red Deer River was running at its average rate, it would take nearly an hour for it to fill up. So that's no small dugout. Number two, why was it so secretly executed without proper protocols, both in procedure and notification? Especially given that it is Neheel county councillors that signed it into being. Number three, what are the collateral consequences of such a huge water reservoir and how is it going to be used? Number four, generally again, what are the exact sources for incoming water and outgoing water? How is it going to be transferred? Truck, pipes, how much, how many times, how long, how noisy, how intrusive? And five, what's the future? And I also speak from more than one perspective. As an adjoining landowner, our lands border the 80 acres that contain this Super Lagoon. As a close by resident, I have, we have one house three quarters of mile north of there and my present home is one and a half miles north, on the same range road as this development. Traffic will obviously be increasing and it already has. I speak also as a taxpayer and voter in this county, the truth delivered from my local government is paramount. I expect the justice that everyone deserves without bias towards any one sector, corporation, or individual. Small farmer Kev just got marginalized and sacrificed in favor of your new corporate buddies with this contract with Artis. I speak with concern, and another, I'm wearing another hat here, I speak with concern for the aquifers and the water in this county. Councillors, you sold us out about this water. You've played your hand with this one with the unanimous vote and obviously money and influence speaks loudly. Not only is water going to be wasted, but potentially the existing aquifers could also be poisoned. In this address to you, I don't have time to cover that, but even though I'd love to. I also speak my concerns for the entire watershed of the Red Deer River and how valuable fresh water has been sold off because of this council's arbitrary decision to become the full facilitator of fracking in this county with all of the collateral consequences. So I have many questions and probably more than can, would develop out of this. My first question would be this, how is it that, have any of you councillors, have you had any personal dealings directly or indirectly with Artis or anyone that's represented them? Like, are they going across your land or anything? Have you already, has anybody had that experience? It appears not. Okay. The quickest question, what did you councillors unanimously vote into being through the contract you signed with Artis? Simply what's in the contract between the county and Artis? Is that available or do I have to ask an abundance of individual questions to get the feeling for this?
The contract is a public contract, it's a standard lease agreement. If you want to ask for an information request, you can ask for an information request and get that information. It's a dugout is what it is and that's what was approved by Neheel County. We are not the body that does water diversions. We do not participate in provincial jurisdiction and that is all provincial jurisdiction.
Albeit, this, they would have never built this Super Lagoon without the okay of council. This would have never been, this is a council, clearly a council decision because it was unanimously passed.
Mr. Reeve, if I could interpret that as a question rather than a statement. The reason it came to the chamber is because it involved lands that are owned by the county. If this was being built on a private piece of land, then that would be a lease arrangement between the owner of the land and Artis.
That would be correct, but I think council has higher responsibility, far higher, especially given the size of it and given, and there's more to come that I would like to delve into. In reference to, for example, Division five representation. Being that Southeast 2932 is in Division five and I live in Division five, Jim Hugo is my representative on council, correct? Correct. So was Jim Hugo present at the meeting on September 25th, 2018, when the councillors outside of Division five secretly discussed and then made this agreement with Artis immediately after?
Mr. Neme, no I was not. I was at my father's funeral during that week, so I had missed all the council meetings then.
Clearly that's a full justification and it's totally reasonable. So if he's not been, if my representative was not able to be there, how is it that that particular vote and discussion about something in Division five, who I elected as a councillor, why was that allowed to continue without his representation?
We as Neheel County Council represent Neheel County. We represent all divisions.
Mr. Neme, this is a five minute warning.
Pardon me?
They have five minutes left in your 15 minutes.
Are you going to shut me off at 15 minutes?
It is the bylaw.
We have 15 minutes for delegations.
I also notice you have discretion to, for, if there's a dialogue and there's questions, you have the discretion to do it longer than.
And I will use my discretion as required.
So if you have the analogy of, if my representative isn't there, like how can that, that's just not, there's no justice in that. You couldn't allow that in common law. Meeting procedure and secrecy. There were several factors, failures in your procedures in addition to no representation. The secrecy of the process to make the contract with Artis exploration renders it completely an error. Alberta Municipal Affairs has an advisory paper called Closed Meetings of Council in Camera. In it, it states several relevant statements under How to Prepare for Closed Meeting Discussions. It states, "Discussions that will be closed during the meeting should be listed on the agenda for the meeting in which they are held. The agenda should contain a confidential heading and then provide a brief description of the topic," and states a section of FOIP that allows closure for that topic. For the September 25th meeting, did council describe the discussion regarding the Artis negotiations or contracts on the agenda? And if you review it, it's no, it was not on the agenda. Further, under the heading on the same page, again from Municipal Affairs, under what authority, quote, "Under what authority can a council close a meeting?" question mark. A council or council committee must pass a resolution stating the reason and the section of FOIP that applies before closing all or any part of a meeting to the public. In addition, your own county bylaws under number 37 of meeting procedures that states a member may make a motion to move in camera, which must include the subject of the matter to be discussed. For the September 25th meeting, there was nothing about that. Two omissions and once regarding the agenda, once in the meeting to provide the reason for going in camera. That was not done and clearly contributes to the secrecy. There's no truth in that and there's no justice in that. To complete the secrecy of the agreement, council comes out of the secret in camera session to unanimously vote without my councillor being there, to direct administration to proceed with the land lease with Artis Exploration Limited. This is the first time that anything is listed, mentioned, or talked about, about this development and only 40 months, four months later do I see something going up south of my place. Now, even after 24 hours of continuous excavation, they're going day and night for a month and they're still not done. It's still going on. So what's the purpose of, what is the purpose of a development permit? Development permits are usually required for the most minor changes in land use. I ask you councillors, what are the benefits to your fellow landlords whom you represent of a development permit on lands close to them? That's a question. What is the purpose to your fellow residents of a development permit?
There was no development permit required for a dugout.
Okay, let's speak in general terms then. What is the purpose of a development permit? If you don't believe that, then outside of, as a general statement.
Mr. Reeve, I think I can answer that question. Development permits are generally required to limit or minimize land use conflicts. That's why development permits are not required for dugouts because the risk of, or the likelihood of land use conflicts is negligible.
A development permit is, is again about conflict. It's like it's a warning to your fellow residents around you about things that could develop. And I've had, have had them, it's like if there's nothing there, you just, but you are alerted. It's an alert to warn people about something going on. So, number, this major excavation falls under number 66 of your land use bylaws, stripping, filling, excavation, extraction, and grading. Under it, it says a development permit application for site stripping, filling, excavation, extraction, grading, and/or recontouring, including construction of artificial water bodies. This is the construction of an artificial water body, not a dugout. A dugout is obviously agriculture in nature. Oh, I could also refer you to your own county webpage, do I need a development permit? Under the subheading, what is a development permit required? When is a development permit required? It says, "Development permits are generally required for any construction, change of use of land or a building, or a change in the intensity of land." And it goes on to say, "Examples of developments requiring permit approval include a dugout." It's on your webpage.
Actually, under section 14 of our land use bylaw, it states that dugouts and burrow pits do not require a development permit.
So, within your own bylaws, when is something a dugout and when is something a major excavation? There's a wide gap. Under your own definition of a dugout, I might add, dugout means excavation of land that results in manmade features that entrap water and include a private dam. Excavation for a water supply is what you're trying to claim and/or excavation for general agricultural purposes. So how do you fairly reconcile that if you believe it's a dugout? Like a dugout is agriculture. If you want to, under Alberta Agriculture and.
I know you've asked these questions in emails and we do believe we've provided those answers to you, Mr. Neme. Maybe you're not satisfied with the answers you got, but the answers have been provided.
Well, they've been provided, but they're evasive and wide ranging answers that don't apply.
Well, we do not have jurisdiction over this. We have jurisdiction over the dugout and that's what.
You call this a dugout?
Absolutely.
This small engine leaders, even in your, okay. Under Alberta Agriculture's definition, dugouts are earthen excavations designed to collect runoff and store it for use during drier times. That's to capture it. It's always about capturing water that's flowing. It's a natural thing. This is a major excavation.
I guess we could argue about the definition of a dugout, but I choose not to. Is there anything else you would like to add to your presentation? Because we are running low on time.
How many, like how many rules can you, could you bend in this? Like, okay. Do you not see, you wouldn't have this in your own backyards. Like there's so much activity going on, like, and what's the future? Like you haven't, you've done this undercover and it's, there's going to be a lot of pipelines. Where's the pipelines going to go?
That's not our jurisdiction.
You guys okayed it. You're the precipitators of it. Any landowner, you're the precipitator, so you should have some answers. It's owned agricultural land.
Can I, rules of procedure here, I, one, it's past your time limit. Two, I'm finding you extremely disrespectful. Thirdly, we worked very hard to provide you answers. If they're not thorough enough, we're glad to answer them more thoroughly for you. But I understand this time to be a presentation and it feels more like a question upon question statement of questions you already have received answers for. So it's my personal opinion that due to the time and due to the fact that you're not presenting new information, this would be a point of order for me.
What am I to do with that? Like, are you shutting me down?
Do you have anything new to add? I will give you another minute.
Okay, there's a spring on my son's land that's right next to it. Have you killed that potentially? So why wasn't I notified of that? I mean, you, there's consequences. You can't say that, like this is a 15 year contract. This is disrespectful to not listen to the situation of individuals. Am I a lesser being than the corporation that you got into bed with?
What we've done is signed a lease agreement for 15 years. We have not got into bed with anyone. And I, I think unless you have something new to add, I will thank you for your presentation and we will continue with our agenda.
What are the, how do I know, what about the noise? Like what about the, there's so many questions here. What, is it going to be trucking? Like, trucking into the super pond? Is it piping, pushing, pumps? Tell me more. Like, you've given me nothing.
I have, I don't know either. That is not our jurisdiction.
Is, you sign it, but you make no, no, you, you don't protect your counts, your county's residents? Have you? Help me with that. Who's, is there two tiers of government here?
There's one tier of government here, it is municipal and we are council for Neheal County. There was a decision we made. We went into closed session to make that decision. We are allowed to go into closed session for three, three separate things, land, labor, or legal. This was a land issue. We went into camera for the land issue. We came out. We made a motion in public and that is where we sit. So thank you very much for your presentation. If you would require any more information, you are more than welcome to make a information request and we will get that information to you.
How, I've, I've tried to...
Mr. Reeve, I'll get a copy of the information request form from Mr. Neamy.
Very good then. Mr. Tenoski will provide you with that. So thank you very much for your presentation. We will take it into consideration.
Uh, justice failed.
I will call a recess for 10 minutes.
Okay, we'll bring the meeting back to order. We'll go to number nine, disposition of delegation. As council's wishes. Councilor McGee.
I would like to make a motion to receive our delegation presentation as information.
Motion's on the floor. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing, oh, Councilor King.
Yeah, not so much discussion, but just an encouragement to our administration that, one, we appreciate that you have responded. Two, just stay open to continuing to respond in a way that's reasonable. And I think, I think they've done that very well. So I just want to make sure that administration knows that we do appreciate your efforts in communicating with Mr. Niemi to this point.
Thank you, Councilor King. We have a motion on the table to receive for information. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. We will move on to agenda item number 12, 12.1. Closed session for intergovernmental relations, section 21. Would someone like to move us in closed session? Counselor Christie?
I'll move that we move into closed session.
Motion's been made to move into closed session. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously.
Okay, we're back in session and we are adjourned at eleven eighteen. Thank you everyone. Have a good week.